Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the East Long Meadow Town Council Meeting of December 13th. I'd like everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'm sorry.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Of the United States of America.
To the Republic.
To the Republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I would ask that we take a moment of silence in reflection of the holidays, the people that we've lost and let's pray for everyone that needs a prayer. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, in accordance with master general law, I have to announce that this meeting is being recorded by Elka and I would ask if there's anyone in the audience who is recording, if so, please state your name. In no hands. Continue. Public comments. Genie, is there anyone signed up for public comment?
Has signed up here.
Don, is there anyone in the audience that has their hand raised for a public comment?
One for public.
Okay. Jump right into council comment. Does any counselor have anything they would wish to talk about?
I'd like to ask a question.
Sure.
Our Christmas tree. It was very well decorated and I noticed it was on for an hour and then off for days. Does anybody know? Was there an electrical problem when we got the congregational church where the power is coming from or?
It's lit now.
I did notice it's back up and yeah, okay, we'll buy three times and it was out. Hopefully the problem has been resolved. Just curious what might have taken place. So.
Great.
I did hear from quite a few citizens that they were very impressed with the lighting and the truck parade. Yeah. Everyone's commented on it. It's wonderful to see stuff like that. Town manager report. Mary, do you have one for us?
Yes, I do. Bane of holiday decorations and ceremonies. The first item on my report tonight refers to the really heartwarming event that took place on November 11th, which was the day after our last meeting. The VFW has a short parade each year to honor veterans and this year in particular, it was extremely special. I thought the performances by the high school kids. Ashley Rayer has a voice that angels would slay other angels for. And Connor Ne and Adler Johnston played taps during the ceremony and it was, it was really lovely. And then there was also a special honor to honor Major Dutton, who was shot down while serving in Vietnam and his name had never been added to the Vietnam Memorial. So it was added this past November. So his family was here, part of his grandchildren were here from Virginia and it was, it was just a very nice event. And on the subject of veterans, we did meet yesterday, the board, that is, the district board, and we interviewed three candidates. The board was very pleased with all three applicants, any one of whom I think we'd be happy to have as our veteran service officer. And so after the interviews were over, we did vote to make an offer of engagement to one of the three. So that hasn't been responded to yet. So I'll save the results until he lets us know what his plan is. But he's a recently relocated individual from the city of Beverly to the town of East Long Meadow. Lengthy service career. So we're hopeful that he'll accept our offer. On the financial side, as you know, you all received the email from the Department of Revenue indicating that our tax rate had been accepted and approved. And I'll, I want to leave the credit taking to Steve Lonergan and for the explanation, but that rate is going down to nineteen dollars and twenty cents per thousand, which I'm very happy to report. I think it's a great savings. Based in large part, as I say in my report, to the use of ARPA funds. And I just hope that the public remembers that these federal funds that were infused into all of our communities over the last two years have allowed a little town like East Long Meadow, which only received 4.7 million to accomplish a lot of infrastructure needs that were overdue. Major cities like Springfield and Chickopee got 120 and 130 million dollars. So these funds are your tax dollars at work is my major point. And I think we are wise to remember that. Even though property values have increased and so the tax bill may go up a little bit for everybody, bear in mind that the rate per thousand has been reduced and we're very happy about that. Since I mentioned Steve, I will also say that he's officially announced his resignation from the town. He's going to return to more familiar territory in the city of Springfield. So their gain is our loss. Steve will be with us till the end of the year. He's, he's really done a lot to, I think, professionalize our finance department and be grateful to him for, for that service for a long time. So thank you, Steve. Our online permitting project, that's the project that's being funded by the MGM grant is underway. Bailey Mitchell is, is leading the charge along with Ryan Quimby in terms of the technology aspect of this. Moving through department to department, I think they were in the clerk's office this week about trying to upload the applications for dog licenses and they've been through planning and building and several other departments. So that's a major achievement that will streamline business operations in town as well as ease of operation for residents when they need to apply for licenses and other permits from the various town offices. Bailey is going to give a report tonight. So I want to take the opportunity while he's not in the room yet to laud his efforts so far. He's only been with the town since April. He's tackled the master plan like, like nobody's business. He's formed an implementation committee. He's full steam ahead on making sure that the goals that were outlined in the master plan have a path to completion. And he's worked very diligently on that. So we know tonight he's got, I don't know if he's going to show the slides once he gets here, but he's got a terrific explanation of how he sees the program and the path forward. So I want to give him a verbal pat on the back for that. He's doing a great job. And particularly in the fact that he oversees conservation as well as the zoning board of appeals and the planning boards and lives down in West Hartford or thereabout. So he's got a long commute to work each day. And he's here several nights a week. He's just walking in now, so I better stop praising him or I'll but I can't say enough. He's, he's doing a terrific job. We have continued to meet, not myself personally, but Bruce Fenny and with the Berkshire Design Team. I know we've discussed the heritage park design several times. And I think we're coming to a crossroads there where we have to make a decision about final design because I think the operations people in town, Donna Prather and Bruce Fenny in particular, and myself, think that that design is finished. And we've spent some money trying to figure out what should go where. So if there's going to be further discussion or changes to that, I think at some time in the not distant future, we ought to have a special meeting, not necessarily of the whole council, but of some subcommittee to give some direction to the DPW and recreation because otherwise we're going off on these plans that we think are finished. And if they're going to be subject to interruption, I think the sooner we know that, the better. Additional negotiations continue with the fire union. There was a rather lengthy session this morning that I was unable to attend based on prior commitments, but thankfully Mr. Christensen was there. We're getting closer, I think, to the finish line. We're narrowing the, the asks by our department. And certainly narrowing our answers to those asks. Other than that, you know, the, the so-called soft services departments, COA, library, recreation, continue to do marvelous work, planning activities for residents in the community. I got an email from Donna Prather the other day that seven and eight-year-old basketball is underway. So they had their own little tip-off classic. And she's got a number of parents and everybody gets very enthusiastic sometimes to a fault over the conduct of who fouled whom and so forth. So she keeps a good lid on that sort of thing. And, and second to the last, we continue to meet myself. I'm a member of the Springfield, the Springfield, the school building committee, as is Kathy Hill and Tom and Steve. Those discussions are very important to this entire town. And as your schedules allow you to attend either by Zoom or in person, the, the upcoming meetings of that committee, I highly recommend it. It's a, as I said in a meeting a couple of months ago, it's a generational decision for this community. And in order to make informed votes, I think the public should inform itself of, of the different options and issues that are being discussed there. And lastly, I'm sad, as I say in the report, to announce that Bill Johnston has offered his resignation as a member of the Board of Assessors. Been on that board since 1989, which is remarkable. Unfortunately, he has to move out of town based on some family circumstances. And so he regrettably had to forfeit his place on the Board of Assessors. So we'll be advertising for that position in the near future. That's it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any counselors have any questions with regard to the report? Okay, we'll move on to approval of minutes. We have the November 10th, 2022 open session minutes. Your motion?
I motion to approve the November 10th, 2022 open session minutes.
I'll second that motion.
Having a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? There are none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Go on through the approval of the November 10th, 2022 executive session minutes.
I move to approve the November 10th, 2022 executive session minutes.
I will second that.
Is there any discussion? There are none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No opposed. Communications, correspondence and announcements. I have none. Genie, was there anything that had come in?
Nope, wasn't.
Okay, the next item is public hearing, but it's scheduled for 6:30. So would someone like to make a motion to move out of order to number nine A licensing matters?
Kath, I move to move out of order to number nine orders of the day licensing matters and return to our normal agenda of business at 6:30.
A second motion.
Any discussion? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. So we will jump down to licensing matters. We have approved a change of manager for the Italian-American War Veterans of the United States, 213 Byman Ave. To Mark Robitaille. Everything in order to change.
It was. I worked with both Mark and Glenn Case, the current manager. I believe they're both here. Look, that's many questions.
Sure, come on up. Ralph, good evening. So I am assuming this is basically just passing over from one manager to another. Nothing else has changed.
Right. I've been bartending there for a few years now and he needed to step down and they asked me to take over. So I volunteered.
Personal family matters that I already paid for. My father passed away on November 2nd.
All right.
Get out of there. I didn't want to have to just walk away.
Yeah, that makes sense. Does anyone have any questions? Hearing none. Do we have a motion?
Sure. I motion to approve a change of manager for the Italian-American War Veterans of the United States, Lombardi Post 64, 213 Byman Avenue to Mark Robitaille.
Second.
Any discussion? There are none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No opposed.
That's right.
It is all set for you.
Glenn, I just want to thank you for the services you provided over the years and thank Mark for stepping up to take the obligation forward.
It was nice. We grew up in town and we've known each other since we were grade school. My father was his coach and my mother was a driver and grandfather was a buster.
Family affair.
That's awesome.
That's okay.
It's easy. Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you. Just want to mention the ABCP has the final approval so nothing can be changed until we hear from them.
Okay. And you're going to give this girl a big shout out.
I know.
And I said it the last time you guys did me in the beginning, when I first got on, the bomb. She's awesome.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you for everything.
Oh, you're welcome. My pleasure.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thanks. Love you.
Okay, Kathy, we have an update from the Town Council Licensing Committee.
Yes, we do. The licensing subcommittee met last Thursday for the first time since this past March to look at a number of things that have prepped onto our agenda. One was an issue brought forward by Fire Chief Morrisette regarding flammable licenses. And it turns out it's going to be an ongoing decision or discussion until he has had an opportunity to do a little more research, but his intent is to ask the licensing committee to try to align the fee schedule for companies that have a need for a flammable license. And those would be like a Rockies that has a tank for propane, a number of other businesses in town. He'd like to get it more in sync with the state regulations. So we're working on that as well as we are working with Genie on a similar situation with the common victual license. There's some discussion around what are the parameters truly for the common victual license? That's a hard word to say.
Common vic.
Common vic. Fair enough. Regarding, if you're serving food, you also, you would need a license of that nature. But you must be able to offer a place within your establishment. It doesn't apply necessarily to an establishment that is serving food, but you walk away with it and eat it somewhere. So we're also working alongside of Tammy Spencer because there are a number of delineations within that that go as far as ice cream trucks and other, you know, like a hot dog cart and, and more mobile kind of food establishment. So that's an ongoing discussion. We'll be working on that again after the holidays. And finally, per our council rules, the licensing committee is required to look at the fee schedule for the various alcoholic licenses. And we made a recommendation to for me to report to the committee that our recommendation for the license fees for 2023 remain as is, we adjusted these back in 2017 and at the time it was a substantial increase for all categories. And in truth, it was sticker shock for all of the establishments. But at the same time, it had not been adjusted since 1989. So it was a giant step forward to try to normalize the fee schedule, but we felt, given the financial climate of the economy and not to be overly burdensome on our small business owners, that it was prudent to stand still on that. We may make an adjustment for 2024, a year from now. And that would come before you in probably the fall. Not in all of them. There's, we feel there may be a discrepancy between two categories. They're only separated by a $200 difference. So it's not going to create a, we don't believe, a hardship for the small amount of licenses in that category. And we will be upfront with those establishments in long enough advanced notice so that there is no hard feelings there. But the, the big ticket item is that we would like to hold put on license fees for 2023.
Any questions? That was easy, huh? Genie, I have a question for you on entertainment licenses. Do we write on the license? So a lot of licenses are approved by the planning board under special permit to our entertainment license mirror what's on the special permit.
No, it's a generic restriction. But it doesn't do that. No, doesn't correlate with the specific special permits for each licensing.
Is there any, well, through the licensing committee, is there any way to bring that closer together or right?
Sure, we could do that.
And the only reason I'm thinking is if there's ever an issue, a lot of times you don't want to bring in and revoke a special permit
Right.
or a small violation.
Right.
And if it's on the license and on the special permit and they both match.
That's a good idea.
That was brought up. And like I said, I just curious more than anything.
If you'd like me to do that, then go ahead with these for 2023.
There's, it's not a great number of licenses.
No, it's no.
Doesn't.
Do that.
That would be great.
It's easy.
Okay, we'll have eight minutes. So yeah, that's, that's why I was just making sure.
All right.
We have approval of 2023 annual license renewals, which you've all received as Exhibit A. And I commend Genie. Amazing. I would have no clue that there was this many different licenses. It's awesome.
You will when you sign them in another three days. There's 125.
And if I may, there are no irregularities with any of these, these. No, I send this whole list to collector's office to make sure that everybody's up to date on their taxes and whatnot. And there was one that was outstanding. So I sent a letter to that licensee and next couple of days they came in and made good. So that's all clear. And there's the liquor licenses on premises have to have a building inspection done by the end of the year. So we've only got one outstanding and that should be taken care of this week.
Okay. But again, it's contingent upon compliance with all departments. So I'm assuming if it's not, then you hold the license until.
Yeah, physically hold it.
Okay.
Now that that's been done.
So with that, do I hear a motion?
Yes, I move to approve the 2023 annual license renewals as shown in Exhibit A, contingent on the licensees, compliance with all town departments.
A second to motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? There are none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Do you want to continue on trading financial matters? Or do we want to, I think you have six minutes?
I don't think we'll get through financial report out of six minutes.
I'm scared of Steve.
He's pretty good, but.
Can you talk fast?
I don't, there may be some questions.
Right, right.
You don't have to start it right at six thirty.
Actually, Genie, do we have to wait until 6:30 to start?
Start before 6:30, but you can start anytime after.
After.
Go through the financial report first and then. Okay, fair enough.
Then why don't we do that? Steve, what do you have for us? We're going to get you out of here a little sooner tonight.
Famous last words.
Tonight's financial report is brought to you by, is a lengthy one. We're going to start off as merry lute to the FY23 tax rate that's been set and approved by the DOR last week, I believe, or beginning of the month or other. Diane Bishop and Don Fonte now are actively trying to work out. They just did the live version. So they'll be sending, once they test the bills, they'll be sending them to get them out by the December 31st deadline. I'd like to take this time to just show that my appreciation, appreciation to them for all the hard work because it's never smooth. It seems smooth because they do such a good job, but it's never smooth. So I want to thank them for all their hard work. Next up, we have is free cash requests. We have several of them. There's one from IT for 7,17892. That was to correct a billing issue from a prior year. DPW has one totaling 39,45407, which was a settlement of a disputed utility bill they had at the end of the last fiscal year. And the Recreation Department is requesting 5980 to purchase a new scheduling time entry system for coaches and seasonal staff. The IT one was in, when we bought the servers, it was back in FY21 for the remote phone access. So we could work remotely with these flight chain issues. The delivery was delayed when it came in. One of the servers was damaged. And so they refused delivery and went back. The, to keep on schedule, they got a new one sent. They applied credits back and forth and all over the place. And as always the case, we applied it twice. And so then the company this year decided that we shouldn't do that. And they came in and said they'd like their money for the second credit. So that's what we're asking for now. It's that's the 7,17892. The DPW had a utility bill in June and a lot of this stuff is above my head as far as the technical stuff. The thermals used were at the previous time period was 1,452. This one came in at 54,741. Needless to say, they kind of said this seems to be off and called and started a dispute on this. Turns out it was in fact correct because it was a true up over three months, April, May and June, that they did all in June. And that was $17,000 roughly. Then Sparks Energy, who we get the energy from, they said, okay, we're going to credit what you paid because you've been paying in an estimate. And now we're going to charge you the actual. That's the balance of the, of the request being asked. To avoid such a thing happening again, they're doing automatic readings. So they will be able to read it from the street and it should be accurate readings each time now. And then the Recreation Department is requesting the 5980 for new scheduling and time entry system for coach seasonal staff. And looking at the system, Donna loves it. And frankly, the cost is about 200 bucks different from what we're doing now between dock and sling. So that will go away. This, this request includes the setup of 3,300. And starting in FY24, it'll be part of her budget. She'll factor in the annual cost, which is less than, less than 3,300, 267960 for the licenses. And that'll be 50 licenses to be able to use. And I think I've seen it work. They did demo. It looks good. And I think I trust Donna that it'll be a good, a good addition. Finally, this is more administrative house cleaning kind of thing for the, on the free cash. The, in August, took a vote to appropriate additional 150,000 into the town manager's budget contingent on certification of free cash. With the auditors, when they came in and the state in general, they just need a reaffirming vote that now that free cash is certified. It was certified as November 9th. It was too late to get it on last month's agenda. So they'd like us to do that right now. That's all. Well, the other free cash is going to be discussed in an executive session. The audit status, we find the Hyamden County Retirement System finally got the OPEB valuation, the actuarial report for Gatsby 67 and 68, I believe. And they, we forwarded that to our auditors. So they're working on that and we should have a draft within, by the end of the year anyways, if not sooner. So they, that was what the holdup was. They've completed their single audits. So they uh, that was what the holdup was. They've completed their single audits and for both the ARPA and for the schools. The operating budget for FY twenty four is well on its way. We had uh each department come down to take a look at the new way of doing it, which is entering it directly into Munis. It seemed to go well. Uh, Tom can sit along with us and was probably bored out of his tier of his mind, cause after five times of the same thing being said, you kinda can say it, but the department had seemed to um sign onto it, if you will. They uh, they actually seemed to think it'll be easier for them than the past way of doing things. So it'll be, I think everybody will be very pleased with this way of doing, entering it. And also in other financial orders, uh, there's a bond order uh for the sweeper truck that we did for um to clean up, it's another cleanup. Uh, in twenty one, the language between the budget vote and what was written down was muddied, I guess, lack of a term. I thought it was clear. Everybody that writes thought it was clear. Bond council looked at it and said, this isn't so clear. So they attached, it's in the packet, there's a uh new way of, that they want us to say to, to supplement to the thing to clearly indicate what we wanted to do with that. And then finally, a couple, uh, there's one more additional uh bill of prior year and they um for four hundred and two dollars and eighty four cents. It's an outside, outside detail that for D P W. That will be taken out of the twenty three's budget. There's no free cash needed for that. Uh, also, our um, our fire department, led by Chief Morsette, received the FY twenty three fire safety equipment grant from the Department of Fire Services. They received, I think it must have been the twenty two one just recently, but this nineteen thousand dollar grant will be used to purchase nineteen active shooter response kits, uh, which will help both East Long Meadow and surrounding towns if needed. And the last piece I have is for executive session, so.
I just add one thing to this.
Absolutely.
Right before you vote, um, should have mentioned it earlier, but with Steve's resignation, um I want the council to be aware of the ripple effects, uh, the weed detail of what his office forms for the town, because Steve's also been serving as the treasurer for Westcom. And so that role will have to be filled. He's also the town's representative to the Scantic Valley Health Trust, attends those meetings. So that role will have to be filled. And last but not least, you may recall from a year or so ago, all of the controversy about the leadership of the Hammond County Retirement System and the audits from PARAC and other state agencies about their investment of funds and so forth. East Long Meadow hasn't participated in the litigation uh seeking to have the A G or the I G take more action than they've already planned on taking. But I asked Steve to attend those meetings uh as a town's representative to protect our interests and um so that's another role that'll have to be filled. So I just want you to know as he was referencing Diane and and Dawn and and our bomb clerk and and all these.
Our bomb too.
So hard every day, and you'd, it it can go right over your head if you're not watching. And you wouldn't be watching, but you're just not here, but I just want him to be uh credited with those contributions as well. And let you know that whoever succeeds in that position is going to have their hands full. So.
Thank you, Eric. And we would like to say thank you for your time and we wish you the best, absolutely.
Appreciate that. It's been a pleasure uh working here. Uh, couldn't think of a better place and um, you know, they uh, a good opportunity came up, and that's the only reason I you um it's it's certainly, I appreciate the confidence that both the council and particularly Mary had hired me. I've enjoyed working with Tom and Jackie and and Genie, cause Genie is the bomb, so. How do you argue with that? I'd like to, I would like to say, real quick, my staff, both in assessors and collectors, but they're counting. For the first, oh god, I say at least half, we didn't have anybody my first year. The guy that Patty Wendell filled in, she came, she took that right over. And she was doing both, and then Terry Charette retired, and she was doing both of those jobs. They step up, Olga is, Olga, Olga is a nuclear bomb. She is just, everybody together, keeps me calm, keeps everybody. They're all just, and they work really well together. And so uh, you know, the town's in very good hands with them. And I do appreciate the honor and the privilege of working with them and working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this time, why don't we knock off all the financial votes and then we'll go back.
Yeah, not inconveniencing anyone.
Oh, that's true, but, okay, um. B one A, uh, approval of bills from a prior year funded for free cash totaling forty six thousand six hundred and thirty two. Do we have a motion?
I motion to approve bills of a prior year funded from free cash totaling forty six thousand six hundred thirty two dollars and ninety nine cents. For seven thousand one hundred seventy eight dollars and ninety two cents to correct a billing issue for I T and thirty nine thousand dollars, four hundred fifty four dollars and seven cents to settle a disputed utility bill from a prior year for D P W.
I'll second that motion.
Is there any discussion? There are none. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Great, we will move on to um approving funding of five thousand nine hundred and eighty from free cash for the purchase of new scheduling software. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve funding five thousand nine hundred eighty dollars from free cash for the purchase of a new scheduling and time entry system for coaches and seasonal staff for the recreation department.
I s- I'll second that.
Yep, go ahead, Connor.
Thank you. Um, I know it's just a small amount of money, but my only question is why we would do this in the the middle of the year out of free cash instead of waiting for the upcoming budget cycle to request changes to software and financing for a particular department.
Alright, so Steve or Mary?
Well, I.
Yeah, I mean, there was, there was issues with getting things completed on a timely basis. And um, this software eliminate a lot of the paperwork, if you will, the back end stuff that takes a lot of time to get done, and yeah, it improves the accuracy and the efficiency of paying the coaches and the staff.
And staff time, Doc uh.
Yeah, saves.
Is working part-time in I T and part-time in recreation, and often the invoices don't get uploaded in a timely fashion. And so we're trying to correct that problem once we've identified it, and uh, that's really why it's happening, being requested now, counselor, as opposed to waiting till year end.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, having motion made, seconded, discussion. Any other discussion? There are none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Uh, B one C, which is a vote to reaffirm the increase hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the town manager's budget.
So our motion to reaffirm the increase of a hundred and fifty K of the town manager's budget appropriated from free cash.
I will second that.
Is there any discussion? There are none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. B one D, a vote to clarify and supplement the July twenty first, twenty twenty appropriation of two hundred and thirty five thousand dollars for the street sweeper.
I motion that the council vote to clarify and supplement the previous appropriation of two hundred and thirty five thousand voted by the council on July twenty one, twenty twenty to purchase and equip a sweeper to provide that as referenced in the report of the Financial Oversight Committee presented to the council prior to to such vote, the appropriation was and is intended to be a borrowing in accordance with G L chapter forty four, section seven, subsection one to be repaid from the Stormwater Enterprise Fund.
I second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? There are none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. B one E, which is a approval bill from a prior year totaling four hundred and two dollars for a police detail.
Excuse me, Ralph, I think the motion is incorrect. Which, the motion is for, it's mentioned some election in June twenty twenty two. And that's incorrect, right? It's for the the D P W detail.
Oh, this motion.
This one, yes, yes.
Have a copy of it.
Wasn't it? Would have been June.
Right, but your financial report, Steve, it's for the D P W police detail. Yeah, and I was just had elections on my brain, I suppose, still, when I was doing the motion.
Okay, so what's what's it supposed to be for?
It's supposed to be for what the financial reports. Police detail for D P W.
Yes.
Not the ele- local election.
Oh, a police detail for D P Ws.
Right, instead of a local one.
That was my mistake.
But it's still four hundred and two dollars.
Still four hundred and two dollars and eighty four cents.
Okay. So, on the motion, that'll thing. Okay, so B one E, Anna, would you like to make a motion knowing that it's for a D P W?
Yes, I move to approve bill from a prior year totaling four hundred two dollars eighty four cents for the police detail for the D P W.
Second.
Perfect. Having a motion made and seconded, any discussion? There are none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Genie.
I apologize.
Um, to the, we have approval of FY twenty twenty three firefighter fighter safety equipment grant. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve on FY twenty twenty three firefighter safety equipment grant from the Massachusetts Fire Department Services. Nineteen thousand dollars from the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency per Mass General Law Chapter forty four, Section fifty three A.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? There are none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that takes care of financial matters. Thank you, Steve. Much appreciated. We will go back to public hearing. So we have a, well, it was a six thirty public hearing. It is now
Six forty four.
Six forty four. So we have a public hearing for um five-year compensation review. Um, so the public hearing is required a second reading for the proposed bylaw change, which would require a five-year review of compensation paid to multiple member bodies and the town council. Uh, town council members present are to my left, Michael Kane, Marilyn Richards, Ralph Page, Kathy Hill, Michael Boucher, Anna Jones, and via Zoom is Connor O'Shea. Um, I would ask uh the clerk to read the legal notice into the record.
The East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on December thirteen, twenty twenty two at six thirty P M in the media room of the Council on Aging located at three twenty eight North Main Street for proposed bylaw change, which would require a five-year review of compensation paid to multiple member bodies in the town council. Information relating to this bylaw is available for review by the public and the town clerk's office on the town's website by the council, Quagletty Town Clerk, clerk of the council.
Great, thank you. Um, Matt, would you like to, or would you please?
Love to.
Bylaw into the record.
Uh, before I get going, S slash S. Subsection, gotcha. Alright. Subsection one fifty three. A, no multiple member body of the town shall receive compensation for its services except as recommended by the town manager and approved by the town council after hearing the recommendations made by the Compensation Review Committee. Any compensation shall be appropriated in the budget by a majority vote of the town council. There shall be no change in compensation for any multiple member body without a five-year review. B, every five years, starting in twenty twenty three, a Compensation Review Committee shall be formed by the town councils to review compensation of multiple member bodies. The Compensation Review Committee shall consist of three or five residents who are not town councilors and do not serve on any multiple member bodies. The town council president or a selected designation shall sit on the committee as ex officio. C, the Compensation Review Committee will be formed in January. A final report recommending the amount of compensation, if any, to each multiple member body, along with a breakdown of how the compensation will be distributed within the multiple member body. Will be submitted to the town manager and president of the town council by April first of the year in which the review committee is formed. The review committee will be charged with looking at compensation paid to similar bodies in other like-sized communities, looking at the impact the board has within the town, and determining how much, if any, compensation is appropriate. D, this Compensation Review Committee will also be charged with looking at the compensation paid to the town council as referred to in subsection thirty seven three. Subsection thirty seven three, town council compensation. A, every five years, starting in twenty twenty three, a Compensation Review Committee shall be formed by the town council to review compensation of the town council. All town council compensation shall be appropriated in the budget at the rate voted on by a majority of the town council after receiving the review committee recommendations. There shall be no change in compensation without a five-year review. B, a Compensation Review Committee will be formed in January. A final report recommending the amount of compensation, along with a breakdown of how the compensation will be distributed within the town council will be submitted to the town manager and president of the town council by April first of the year in which the review committee is formed. Review committee will be charged with looking at compensation paid to similar town councils in other like-sized communities and determining how much, if any, compensation is appropriate. C, a Compensation Review Committee shall be the same committee charged with reviewing compensation of multiple member bodies as outlined in subsection one fifty three.
Thank you. So typically, at this time, we would ask the applicant to present the rationale for this. So I brought this forwards. Um, if you remember, I believe it was two years ago, the school committee had come before um the town council um during our budget cycle and asked for an increase in their stipend. And it was denied, postponed. Uh, last year, they came back and again, it was postponed, and the rationale was um that we should look at all bodies. And, you know, do a review of everyone at once, so that way there every five years or every so often, we could uh, you know, look at other towns, what they're compensating, and go through the whole uh process. So with that, I had asked uh the council for permission to look into this and try and craft a bylaw. I did. We have turned it over to the bylaw review committee for their input. And I'd like to ask Tom to step forwards.
Good evening.
Hi, Tom.
Hi. Yep, you're stuck with me, uh, the chair. The illustrious Bill Fonseca couldn't make it, so you get me. Uh, we actually overhauled this pretty, pretty good, right in Ralph's face. Um. We thought uh, it it, it worked better as a standalone bylaw. So we had, the the original proposal was to append this onto chapter one fifty, which was the multiple member bodies. Uh, but we had our conversation and similar to chapter one seventy seven, the charter review committee, uh, we thought that uh, we should break this out into its own bylaw. Um, and then amend, still amend chapter thirty seven for uh town council. Uh, the same way. We made some some minor tweaks to the language. Um, and uh, we voted to have Bill now me uh recommend um, that it be uh approved as as amended. Do you wanna, do you want me to read the? Does everybody have the new one, or?
If he needs it, I won't say what I need to say, so.
Do you need? Or are you offering to read it?
No, I'm not. Do you want me to read it?
Um, I think it should be read into the record, uh, the recommended changes, so um, because they were pretty extensive on it, so if you would read it, that would be.
Not a problem. No problem. Chapter one fifty-one, multiple member bodies, Compensation Review Committee. Subsection one, membership. Compensation Review Committee shall consist of five registered voters and no more than two members can be current town councilors. Town council president or a selected designee shall sit on the committee as ex officio. Subsection two, powers and duties. A, no multiple member body of the town shall receive compensation for its services except as recommended by the town manager and approved by the town council after hearing the recommendations made by the Compensation Review Committee. Any compensation shall be appropriated in the budget by a majority vote of the town council. B, every five years, starting in two thousand twenty-three, a Compensation Review Committee shall be formed by the town council to review compensation of multiple member bodies. The Compensation Review Committee will be formed in January. Final report recommending the amount of compensation, if any, to each multiple member body, along with a breakdown of how the compensation will be distributed within the multiple member body, will be submitted to the town manager and president of the town council by April first of the year in which the review committee is formed. The Compensation Review Committee will be charged with looking at compensation paid to similar bodies and other like-sized communities, looking at the impact the board has within the town and determining how much, if any, compensation is appropriate. C, the Compensation Review Committee will also be charged with looking at the compensation paid to the town council as referred to in subsection thirty-seven dash three. D, notwithstanding the above, the town manager reserves the right to review and set compensation for multiple member bodies at any time as set forth in Article three of the Charter. And thirty-seven dash three was amended to say compensation for the town council shall be reviewed in accordance with chapter one fifty-one.
So quite a few changes, but as we've discussed, um, the intent of the bylaw is still identical. Uh, what it's doing is mandating that at least once every five years, you take a look at it. It's not limiting the town manager as far as her ability to make adjustments in between. All it's saying is that let's at least look at these every five years. Um. So with that, I'm gonna start with the public because this one looks pretty easy. Um, being a public hearing, I will open this up to any public comments, uh, questions. Don, is there anyone online? Anyone, anyone at all? Don't see anything, so at this time, I'll bring it back to the board. Um, bringing it back, I would ask for any thoughts, any comments from board members? Connor? Anything?
No, nothing here.
Merrill?
I, I'd like to add that in the, as a member of the committee, we received an email from a resident. And there was some concern about um the perception that the council should be handling stipends for multiple member bodies. And there was, there was a change. Originally, it was all um, registered voters. Now we've added two counselors to the process to add to the perceived legitimacy of it. However, it will still come to the council to review the report and the council will make the decision. The second piece that was pointed out in that email was that this was indeed a responsibility of the town manager and we certainly recognize that, and that's why the language at the, at the end says that at any time, if the town manager was of the opinion that an adjustment needed to be made, she had the authority and the privilege to do that. So we're not trying to take away anybody's, anybody's ability to do their job, so. I just wanted to clarify that.
And we got to hit our quota by adding notwithstanding by law.
Bye, Ralph.
Very important. Um, so I'm gonna ask, obviously, this has to do with our town manager too and setting uh stipends and all. Had you seen anything? I'm sure if you did, you would have probably mentioned to Tom.
Yeah, my initial concern when you started to draft it was, I was afraid it was gonna conflict with the charter because I was supposed to submit the budget that has those stipends closed or incorporated in it. But I think as Marilyn just pointed out, I think there's sufficient language in the bylaw to protect that. Um, and it's probably a good idea. I mean, uh, we have very few boards that are actually uh paid a stipend. Um, so it's worth reviewing and certainly at a regular interval, like five years makes sense, if not more often.
Any other discussion? Then I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second? Okay, this will be a roll call vote. Um, I will start with Anna.
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Okay, so public hearing is officially closed. And then I would entertain a motion for the approval of the new bylaw um, as amended by the bylaw subcommittee.
Okay, so I'll motion to approve a bylaw change, which would require a five-year review compensation paid to multiple member bodies as presented.
I will second that.
Presented by the bylaw subcommittee, correct? Just making sure, that's awesome. Um, any discussion? There are none. This is a roll call vote also. Mike?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Great, thank you. That motion passes. And so we will move on to our next public hearing, which was scheduled for six forty-five. And it looks like it's roughly six fifty-seven. Um, so uh, this is a public hearing for required second reading for a proposed new bylaw defining and outlining a commission on disability pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter forty, Section eight J. Um, again, council member present are Connor O'Shea, Michael Kane, Marilyn Richards, Ralph Page, Kathy Hill, Matthew Boucher, and Anna Jones. Um, I would ask our clerk to read the legal notice into the record.
The East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on December thirteen, twenty twenty-two at six forty-five P M in the media room of the Council on Aging located at three twenty-eight North Main Street for proposed new bylaw defining and outlining a commission on disability pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter forty, Section eight J. Information relating to this bylaw is available for review by the public and the town clerk's office and on the town's website for the Council Gina Quagletty Town Clerk of the Council.
Thank you. Anna, would you read the proposed bylaw into the record?
Sure.
Chapter one eighty, Commission on Disability, Section one eight zero dash one, Membership Term Appointment. One, the commission shall, the commission shall consist of seven members appointed by the town manager. The majority of the members shall consist of people with disabilities. One of the members may be a member of the immediate family of a person with a disability. One member shall either be an elected or appointed official of the town. Two, the members shall initially serve the following terms. A, two members shall serve one-year terms. B, two members shall serve two-year terms. C, three members shall serve three-year terms. After the initial term, all members shall serve three-year terms. Subsection one eight zero dash two vacancies. Vacancies on the Commission on Disability shall be filled by the town manager. Subsection one eight zero three, Purpose. Pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter forty, Section eight. Purpose of the Commission on Disability is to coordinate or carry out programs in coordination with Massachusetts Office on Disability in order to bring a full and equal participation in all aspects of life in the town. Disabilities. Subsection one eight zero four, Powers and Duties. One, the Commission on Disability shall review and make recommendations, policies, signatures, services and activities uh of departments and agencies of the town as they affect people with disabilities. Two, the commission shall research local problems of people with disabilities and coordinate the activities of other local groups organized to meet the needs. Three, the commission shall initiate, promote legislation at the local, state, and federal level with advances, which advances the equal status of people with disabilities and ensure the appropriate regulations are adopted and enforced pursuant to such legislation. Four, the commission shall encourage public awareness of disability issues and provide information, referral, guidance, and advice to individuals, businesses, organizations, and public agencies in all matters pertaining to disability. Five, the commission may receive gifts of property, both real and personal, in the name of the town. Subject to the approval of town council, such gifts will be managed and controlled by the commission.
Thank you. It's time, applicant. Mr. Christians.
Here we are again.
We are.
What is the rationale for this bylaw? Obviously, it's pretty self-explanatory, but if you go through it, that would be great.
Yeah, so we uh, I think this has been talked about for many years now. Um, basically, uh, like, like the, the bylaw lays out. Um, sort of carrying out programs uh, uh, to, to, you know, help members of the community with disabilities. Um, so there's quite a robust, uh, you know, sort of mass general law on, on a lot of this, so um, we already have um, interest in the community about being on this commission. Um, so, um, we talked about it in the bylaw subcommittee. Again, I'll, I'll speak for Bill uh, as the chair, but uh, you know, we had a very brief discussion. We didn't make any uh revisions to the bylaw from the first reading. Um, and uh, so it, it basically uh, it looked good to us and we would recommend to town council to be uh, approved.
So if I understand correctly, which, I mean, we talked about in the bylaw, um, previously uh, approval to create a commission on disability was already granted. And what we're looking at doing basically is putting it the language in, setting out how to do it.
Right. Yep.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, I am gonna open it up to the public then, to ask for their input. Anyone? You can just come forward. Don, I'm assuming no one? Okay, I'm gonna bring it back to the council for any additional comments or discussion. Do I hear any? I think this is something that's been needed for quite a while, and I appreciate you uh stepping up to write it.
Problem at all.
So, um, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Having a motion made and seconded to close the public hearing, um, all those in favor, no, sorry, it's a roll call vote. Um, Mike?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Yes.
Anna?
Connor? Yes.
Okay, the public hearing has been closed. Um, then I would ask for a motion for the approval.
Move to approve a new bylaw defining and outlining a commission on disability pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter forty, Section eight J as presented.
I second.
Any discussion? There are none. This is also a roll call vote. Start with Anna?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Awesome, that passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, now, now we will be turning to Steve, old business. Um, under old business, we have a discussion on town manager search. So obviously, this is ongoing. Um, our town manager will be here through June thirtieth, and we are going to have to start the process of looking. Um, so I wanted a discussion. We've had two companies in the past. Um, are we looking to um, go back to one of those companies to ask for a search? Um, I'm, I'm looking for the wishes of the board. Mike?
Um, I, I can only state that um, I participated in all searches and the process with both companies. And uh, my opinion at this point is that I would recommend doing the search in-house ourselves this time. And if somebody asked me what's changed uh, to influence my decision not to want to go with an outside agency, the biggest point I could bring up is that we have an H R department. And working with our H R department, we were able to accomplish, I would say, ninety-nine percent of what the outside agency did. And um, obviously, it would save the town uh, a minimum of ten thousand dollars.
I would add to that, that uh, we can um, reach out to the MMA, the Massachusetts Municipal Association, and um, they are often called upon to give advice. I can't speak for if there's a fee, but I would, I pretty certain that because it's a uh, agency to serve municipalities, if there were a fee, it would be nominal versus paying a ten thousand to a, a private corporation or a private entity to do the search.
Oh, go ahead, Marilyn first.
She, she agreed uh, with what the statements were.
Thank you. Um, I would pretty much agree with all of the above as well. Um, and I think what's different now this time as well is that in the past, I think when we did the first two rounds of searches with an external firm, it added that extra layer of transparency, given some of the potential controversy that had happened over the prior years, but I think now that that issue's pretty much been resolved, I think it would be wise to work with the H R department and conduct the search internally.
Anna, any thoughts?
I agree with everything that was said.
Yeah. Nothing to add.
So, go ahead, Connor.
I think the one thing I forgot a moment ago too was that after after H R would help facilitate the, the applications and stuff, I'm not so sure. I mean, I suppose we certainly should talk about that, but I think my personal preferences, I'm not so sure that we even need a screening committee itself. Um, I think we could also handle that in a meeting or two of the council and come to a consensus and a decision, because I think especially now that, you know, we're in the holiday season, this topic's gonna come up pretty quickly. We're gonna need to act on it as fast as possible pretty soon.
I, I would tend to agree with what Connor just said. Um, so with that, I would be looking for authority, permission to reach out to our H R department and start the process rolling if that works for everyone. Is that good, Connor?
Yeah, that works. I mean, I suppose since it would be asking a department head, should we also, you know, ask that through Mary as well?
Absolutely. Mary, do you mind if I reach out to Joan and talk to her?
I don't mind at all. Uh, I'd be happy to do it for you if you like.
Maybe we can do it at the same time, actually, and sit, sit in together.
Problem, yep.
More ears, the better. Okay. So next on the agenda is D twenty twenty-two Master Plan Implementation Annual Report. Hi, Bailey, how are you?
I'm good. How, how's the council doing?
We're doing okay. What do you guys think?
Nice to be here in person for once.
Nice to see you.
Um, I'm just calling up. I'm joining Zoom so I can pull up my um, presentation for tonight. Um, but while I do that, I just wanna kind of give a uh introduction to what the Master Plan Annual Report of, purpose of it is. Um, so the master plan uh, was approved in twenty twenty-one uh, or adopted by the, the town council. Um, and so with that, the um, came a need for a master plan implementation committee, um, and, um, they are also tasked with, uh, putting together an annual report. Because we haven't had a master plan implementation committee convene and meet and do, um, an annual report, I, uh, kinda started that process myself, um, putting the annual report together, um, now, so we can kind of begin that. And also, um, because of that, I don't have a full annual report for you tonight. It's really just kind of an overview of what one will look like in the future and kind of the structure of that, as well as the, um, master plan implementation committee itself, what it will look like. Um, so we're kinda gonna, I'm just gonna walk through that first. Um, the presentation I submitted to Genie and the council is gonna look a little bit different. I'm going a little out of order, so, um, just kind of follow along with me here. Hopefully that, uh, doesn't throw anyone off too much. Um, I just wanted to cut out a couple things, because it really, I don't wanna go too in-depth. Um, now, I, I'm gonna have a written report with, you know, much more detail. So, tonight, I just wanna overview of the master plan implementation committee first, uh, beginning with, uh, they're essentially going to be the, the body that kind of goes through the implementation action plan or the implementation matrix is the, uh, summarized version of the master plan, kind of towards the end of the master plan, um, in a matrix style, uh, format, so. And, uh, they will also kind of look at the priorities and, um, be mo- mostly made up of the primary implementation, um, group, uh, column within the matrix. So I kinda put that together, um, on this slide showing, essentially, this is all of those, uh, individual primary columns, uh, within the matrix. So, it's, uh, all made up of town boards and commissions, um, planning board, conservation commission, um, and also department heads, uh, kind of leading the charge on certain strategies. Um, so you might be wondering what a strategy is if you haven't looked, spent as much time in the master plan as I have. Um, that's just essentially a, uh, action item that's outlined within the master plan, um, or the implementation matrix or action, uh, uh, action plan. Um, the strategies, it kinda looks like this, um, you know, with a lot of rows. Um, and so I put together a guide. You have the full guide. I'm not gonna go through the whole thing tonight, but that will be distributed to all the primary implementation groups, um, and their representatives, so they can kind of walk through each one of their strategies on their own and, um, work with Mary and, and myself to kind of continue the process throughout each year. Um, and we would, you know, work together to put together an annual, annual report. Um, that way we have it all in writing. Um, but, you know, the on, ongoing nature of the master plan will require, um, more updates throughout the year, so it's not just gonna be one annual thing. So, uh, the group would meet and kind of discuss those things, or some members might just work with Mary and myself throughout the year, um, especially the ones that only have one or two strategies. So, um, with that being said, just to focus on the timeframes, um, column, the first annual report's going to focus mostly on the short-term ones, because, um, unless there are any that, uh, any medium or long-term items that have had significant progress, um, there's, obviously, it's only been about a year, a little bit over a year since the, the plan was adopted, so we're really kind of in that short-term period still. Um, as well as any ongoing, uh, strategies that would require an expansion or, um, kind of, uh, a review of any of the progress that's been made on that. So, um, so the report will kind of focus on the strategies, um, in three different sections. Uh, the first section will be an update on strategies that are on track to be completed within the timeframe that is allotted, um, or kind of, I guess, targeted, uh, within the matrix. Um, a couple of examples, and I'm using my department as, you know, the examples, um, and anything related to planning and community development. Um, highlights the, the mixed-use zoning. Um, I'm sure many of you know, we've already begun discussions with the planning board on, um, the potential for a center-town mixed-use zoning district, um, and a bylaw. That bylaw has not been drafted yet, um, but that is, uh, you know, that is something that is a goal to do within the next year, so that would hopefully be on track to, um, be adopted by the end of next year. Um, and then improved permitting is, uh, D one is the, uh, we've essentially started working with a company called OpenGov to implement online, online permit, permitting, sorry, or, um, not, I don't think every, every department's gonna be on it, but for a vast majority of permitting processes will be online. Um, as well as, uh, just another thing to mention, I'm working on a site plan review bylaw amendment that um, I'm planning to take to the planning board next week for a discussion, so you may be seeing that next year as well. Um, and then another highlight is the, uh, green communities designation, which, um, I brought to you the fuel-efficient vehicle policy last, or back in September, I believe. Um, the council also approved the stretch code, um, so you, you're aware of that process. Um, it's been ongoing. The designation portion is, uh, requires two more things, the council to approve the FEV policy, um, which has already been approved by the school committee. Um, the energy reduction plan would also have to be adopted by the town council and the school committee as well. Um, and so we're looking to do that in January of next year, um, at the town council meeting. We're gonna hopefully have, uh, the state there to kind of answer some questions, um, and concerns the council may have, but I do know that, uh, PVPC will have someone there. Um, they've been helping us with the process, so, um, at the very least, we'll have someone that can answer some questions, but, uh, any questions that you do have, if you can get them to me in advance, um, it would be really helpful for them to kind of get a written response or, uh, something that we can get to you before the meeting. That way, you feel a little bit more comfortable going into the actual, um, reading of the policies. Um, so that's a review of some of the things that are coming up next year, uh, hopefully for, uh, final approval. Um, and then the next section is the critical strategies, uh, anything that's kind of falling behind or not seeing significant, um, uh, progress. So, just a couple of examples, um, things within my reach, mostly because I don't have the time or the resources to kind of look at these things right now. Um, one, just one to highlight, one, uh, the accessory dwelling units, uh, it's outlined in the, um, master plan to essentially just look into having a bylaw where it would be allowed, um, and kind of going through that process. Uh, I haven't really had the time to do that, and, um, I think actually the planning board is listed as the primary there, but, um, obviously, I would be kind of spearheading that, so, um, so that's just an example. And, uh, again, the written report will go in detail and depth on not just my department, but the whole, uh, master plan as well. So, um, the last section's gonna highlight, like I said before, any of the ongoing strategies, any updates to the ongoing strategies, um, in terms of progress, but also anything that needs to be added as a, uh, another strategy, a short term, um, that kind of works towards another ongoing strategy. Um, a good example of that will is the master plan. There is an on, or, sorry, not the master plan, the, um, center-town zoning, uh, mixed-use zoning has an ongoing strategy that, uh, calls that out, as well as a short-term strategy that kind of, um, hammers down the detail a little bit more. Um, so that basically, an ongoing strategy is kind of more vague, and, um, a short-term strategy would kind of give us a more detailed approach to things that would work to, um, uh, basically, uh, achieve the, um, ongoing strategy. Um, so with that, that's, uh, kind of an outline of what to expect when, um, hopefully, I'm, I'm aiming for the end of February to have a written report completed. Um, like I said, we kinda have to get the, uh, master plan implementation committee together, so with the holidays, um, it'll probably happen in January, and I'm hoping to have enough time to kind of put together the report, and, um, maybe I'll come for a presentation sometime in March, but it'll be hopefully not too long. Uh, the report's gonna be probably pretty long, so, um, yeah, just because I've gone through mine so far, and it's already, um, getting up there, so. Um, but yeah, that's all I have for tonight, if, uh, there are any questions.
Any questions?
Not a question, but a comment. I'm pretty impressed with all the people you're gonna pull together on this master plan implementation committee.
Yeah.
Um, do, uh, are you going, is the plan just to reach out to departments and have the department designate someone? Are you looking at department heads? Or, you know, what, what's your thoughts on?
Yeah, so the, the main thought is basically to have the department heads, um, and, you know, if they can't make it, a represent, uh, representative who works closely on the projects or the things that would work towards the strategies. Um, at, like I mentioned, I don't know, well, I, I might not have said it out loud, but in the, on the slide, it says it's a draft. Um, the reason for that is because Mary and I discussed, it might not be um, necessary to have all of those, um, individuals in the room, um, in terms of, you know, like, a, a full overview of the full plan. Um, because a lot of them only have one or two strategies, like I said before, so they can kind of work with us individually on those throughout the year, um, without attending another meeting and, you know, taking up staff time that might not be necessary.
There are some key people on this list that I think would really be important to be, you know, involved in that process.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Any questions, Bailey, Connor?
Just a comment, Ralph. I just wanted to say thank you, because it, it's great to see that there's traction to continue to move the master plan forward, so it doesn't become another report on a shelf somewhere, so thank you for moving it along.
Absolutely.
I would, uh, I would absolutely agree, um, seeing old master plans that I dug up out of the archives that they were created and put on a shelf and never done, and, um, just to see this, uh, like I said, moving forwards, I think it's handful. Great job.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you so much. We look forward to seeing you in January.
Thanks, Bailey.
Thank you.
We intend to do that, Ralph, by May, every quarter, couple months, maybe.
Awesome.
Have an update for you, so that you stay aware of where we are in terms of accomplishing the goals that are highlighted there. And I have to really commend Bailey for his organizational skills. I'm very impressed. Drive safely on your way home, okay? Yeah. Okay.
Okay, next item on the agenda. I had asked a discussion at town council committee appointment. As you know, I am in, uh, charged with the duty of appointing people to committees. Um, I wanted to give you a basic draft to start. Couple counselors have reached out to me with regards to this. There's still room for adjustments and changes and all. Um, the reason I sent it out is so that you would have a general idea of where I'm thinking and what I'm doing. Uh, but I will tell you, there'll be some changes made over the next few weeks. And as I make changes, I will be emailing you and updating you on them. And next, we have under new business. Um, so, the way the charter's laid out is either a town counselor or a petitioner or department head would come in front of the council and basically ask for permission to look into creating new bylaws, um, and then going through the process like we did tonight. So there was three of them that had come up. Um, one of them, uh, Tom had brought to my attention, which was, um, the human resource department. So I believe we have a section in bylaw that's reserved for it, but because when we created E-code and all, there was no HR director department. Um, this is something I'd like to look into and, um, come back with a proposed bylaw, or have Tom come back with one, because he has the template. Um, and, and just to bring things up to date.
Right.
Um, just like the Commission on Disability. Um, the next is, um, I, I've mentioned it a few different times. Under E-code for transparency, we have a section that will list all, um, fees and penalties that all the different departments charge, and I just wanted to make sure that the council would, uh, let me go forwards, craft one to bring forwards again, and all it's doing is bringing it to you so that you can review something. And then, um, the last one, I talked to Genie, I guess a couple people had been in with regards to hunting and stuff, and we have a firearms bylaw. All I'm looking for is, again, permission to review it and to see if any changes need to be done, and if so, bring them forwards to you. Is, have any issues with having me and Tom start the process? Okay, great. It'll keep me busy over the holidays.
Firearms to the meeting.
No. So the next is, I have to pen my motions again. And then we'll go since D three.
Right.
At the human resource. Yep. Oh, thank you. Um, so is there a motion for D three, um? No, so hold on a sec. So we're not re, we're not, um, opposing by law.
New business, right, right. D three, Matt.
No, um, so we don't need to re, uh, we don't need to, uh, send it to a bylaw review committee yet, because there is no bylaw or anything created. All this was, was I was talking and petitioning, um, and saying, do you guys mind if I actually create one? And then the next meeting, when I bring it in, we'll do a first reading of it, and then we'll send it to the bylaw review committee, because there's nothing to send to them right now. Nothing's been created.
So that, that, that same example applies to the next two motions.
Absolutely. So D three, four, and five. We don't need tonight.
Okay.
I thought I had updated, uh, motions, and I thought those were off of it. No?
No.
Maybe I crossed them off. Okay, the next is, um, I, uh, motion to move into executive session to consider the purchase exchange taking lease or value of real property, three eighty-two North Main Street, if such discussion may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the governmental body, then return to open session.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a second to that motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded. This is a roll call vote. Uh, Anna?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Okay, we are moving into executive session at this time, Don. Thank you, Don. Um, we are back in session, and we will continue, um, under number six. It was at three eighty-two North Main Street. Approval, um, to allow President Page, myself, to sign the declaration regarding the unique qualities and location of three eighty-two North Main. So before we go to that, do we need to read that in to the record, Genie?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
That just satisfies the legal piece.
Perfect. Just wanted to make sure. So is there a motion?
I move to approve President Page to sign the declaration regarding the unique qualities and location, three eighty-two North Main Street.
Second.
Discussion. There are none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, Connor. Any opposed? Okay, that was six A. It's B, it's approve a loan authorization of three point five million to pay costs for purchasing the land. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I moved that three point five million is appropriated to pay cost of purchasing the land and building it in street, I'm gonna mask for town offices, including the payment of all costs and those and related there to, that, to meet the probation, the trust.
And those and related there to that to meet the appropriation, the treasurer, I'm sorry, that to meet the appropriation, the treasurer. With the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow said amount under. General laws, chapter forty-four subsection seven, one, or any other enabling authority. That the town managers authorized to contract for and expend all federal or state aid available for the project, execute any. Agreements or documents necessary to affect such purchase and take any other actions necessary to carry out this project.
Is there a second? Thank you, Connor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
I or no?
Just being comical, nay.
Thank you. Okay. Um, the next is to approve a transfer of two point four million from free cash to purchase. The building at three eighty-two North Main. Is there a motion for that?
I move to approve a transfer of two point four million dollars from free cash. To complete the purchase of land and building at three eighty-two North Main Street.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Connor. Have an emotion made in seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. The next is to grant President Page authorization to sign the purchase and sale agreement. For the land and building at three eighty-two North Main Street when appropriate. Is there a motion?
A uh motion to grant President Page authorization to sign the purchase and sale agreement for the land and building at three eighty-two North Main Street. When appropriate.
I'll second it for discussion.
Perfect. Motion made in seconded. Discussion.
Um, is it, I know that the town, that the council president. Is able to sign the contract for the town manager when we negotiate. Is it? Is it proper for the legislative body to sign the purchase and sale, or should Mary be doing that?
I think either is acceptable, but I I think it's more acceptable than the town council to.
Okay, I just wanted to ask the question.
And you can delegate that to me, but.
Be appropriate for both of us to sign?
Appropriate, but not necessary, one or the other.
Okay, I just needed some clarification.
So I think going forwards, it would either be myself or delegated to Mary or the both of us. Whatever's needed legally to create it is what.
When appropriate is only because the declaration of uniqueness has to be published for thirty days in the central register by law before there's. Before the purchase. So you have time to talk to the schools. Yeah.
Any other further discussion?
My discussion point was. I'm all for, it it's it's the deal I don't like, but I don't have any objection to either one of you um signing.
Okay.
Also, um if that's the way you're interpreting that.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay. And hopefully the last one.
Or do you already do it?
No, we didn't.
Okay, E. Um, the authorities assign any lease documents required in order for the town to assume partial occupancy of three eighty-two. I have a motion, Connor.
I move to grant President Page the authority to sign these documents required in order for the town to assume partial occupancy. At three eighty-two North Main Street prior to closing.
A second.
Okay, under further discussion, um, Mary, we had talked about this and that's based on the fact that. A lease would be with zero cost if we're purchasing the building.
Yeah, the purchase and sale calls for the the right of the town to occupy in advance of closing, but they want a lease document in place. So that if there's any default on the performance of the purchase and sale, that there would be a a rental fee due, but it's it's.
So I just wanted everyone to realize that I'm not signing a lease agreement with a cost involved in it.
It's just a procedural matter from.
Yep.
My point of view.
And it's uh who's who's drafting these agreements? Is our town council gonna do that?
They're either drafting them or they're reviewing them. I've asked the broker to have their council draw it up and I'm sure they have a standard one. But authority Wallace will take a peek. I think it's okay.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Action items for next meeting.
It's next year.
Why are holidays?
And if there's any reason for us to convene for some reason before the end of the year. I'd like to point that's in the event that there's something that we need to talk about.
I don't know. Yeah, if something comes up and we have to, we will always reach out and find a way to get a meeting in.
Special meeting.
Exactly. But right now, it looks like it's January tenth. It's our next meeting.
I would just like to echo Marilyn's comment with the. Potential interim meeting too, even if it was just an update based off of all of the items that happened on our agenda today. If there's progress before a month from now.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Connor.
Yep. Um, with this, again, Steve, I wanna say thank you for everything you've done. Uh, you've been instrumental in this and um absolutely amazing whenever I've had a question on finances. Um, you you always get back to me. And I I thank you. I thank you for the service of the town too. With that, I would enter in a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you all so much.